Good evening, everyone. We will call the November 5 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is the roll call. Charlene?
Sasso.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. And the next order of business is the invocation. And we have Rick Demarest from InterVarsity Christian Fellowship. Everyone, please rise.
Sovereign Lord, we remember that you alone have all wisdom and all knowledge and all power. And we remember that. We give thanks for the good things that you have given us, the safety, and for these servants of our community. Thank you for that. God, I pray tonight for wisdom and for clear communication and for respect as we listen to one another. God, I also pray that as we enter the election tomorrow, your will will be done and that will be full participants. God, we give you thanks for your goodness and pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the next order of business is to adopt the agenda. We do have one change for starters to the agenda, and we'll go to Brett Limbaugh from our Community Planning Department.
Yeah, item 97. I'd like to change that to first reading instead of second reading. I'd like to amend the ordinance number from 5867 to 5868.
Joel, is that acceptable and first reading is still valid?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So we'll change it from second reading to first reading. The ordinance number is now 5867.
5868.
5868. All right. We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could add a point of personal privilege under Mayor's Items. Oh, wait, wait, that's next year. Just on Alderman's Items, please. Thank you.
87A. Do we have any additional changes to the agenda? And one thing to note is item 88, that variance request has been withdrawn. So if you're here to speak to item 88, that has been withdrawn and that item will be tabled. Item 88 is the variance to the Sign Code Board of Appeals regarding the digital sign for the county fairgrounds along Campbell Street. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted? Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll go on to, we'll go to our awards and recognitions. And Chad, while we're getting set up, if you want to bring up your point of personal privilege, if we could have John Hague come up to the podium and also our award for council members, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say to Mrs. Brickhouse's class, first grade school, first grade at Corel Drive, they participated in a city council meeting we had at their classroom the other day. It was my son's class. And I swore them all in. They're all honorary council members and some of them might be watching tonight. And I have to say, they're better behaved and more attentive than some of the people up here. I'm joking, come on now. The fact of the matter is, I do appreciate their efforts and it was really neat to watch them do that. And so congratulations to all of you. And also, either we need to quit having so many council meetings or I need to quit having so many children, because it is my son Vladimir's first birthday today. So I want to wish him a big happy birthday. I know we realize he's not watching, but thanks to the internet, he might do that someday. So happy birthday, buddy. Thanks.
This is, hello, this is pretty uncommon, me starting this out. November 2012, City of Rapid City Citizen of the Month. The November 2012 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to our community. We are pleased to present this award to John Hague. John was born Buffalo, New York. As the son of a military man, John resided in many different locations around the world throughout his life. John followed in his father's footsteps and joined the Army. He is a veteran of Vietnam War and was wounded twice in battle. In 2006, John retired from employment in the communications industry. John has been actively involved around the city of Rapid City. He helped establish the Lemon Street Gardens and is currently the president of the College Park Block Club. John has also been very active in his neighborhood. He is known as the guy willing to help anyone and not expect anything in return. John has been involved in substandard housing renovation projects and has helped get substandard rentals in the Lemon Street area cleaned up and improved. John constantly attempts to better our community by being very active in betterment projects in his neighborhood and is acting and acting as a model citizen of what good neighbor should be. Thank you, John, for your dedication to Rapid City. We are proud that you are a member of our community. Want that back?
John, we want to thank you sincerely for your service to our community and also to our country. And now Amanda will read the proclamation.
Whereas the city of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas the November Citizen of the Month is awarded to John Hague, a resident of Rapid City, and whereas John has been actively involved around the city, he has contributed much of his time to the beautification of Lemon Street, and whereas John has attempted to better our community by acting as the model citizen of what good neighbor should be. Now therefore, we, Alderman John Roberts and Alderwoman Amanda Scott of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, the mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim John Hague as the November 2012 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of his innovation and leadership and the many contributions he has made to our community.
Congrats.
John, we want to thank you sincerely for your service to our community and also to our country. And now Amanda will read the proclamation.
Whereas the city of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas the November Citizen of the Month is awarded to John Hague, a resident of Rapid City, and whereas John has been actively involved around the city, he has contributed much of his time to the beautification of Lemon Street, and whereas John has attempted to better our community by acting as the model citizen of what good neighbor should be. Now therefore, we, Alderman John Roberts and Alderwoman Amanda Scott of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, the mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim John Hague as the November 2012 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of his innovation and leadership and the many contributions he has made to our community.
Katie Parker, come up, please. And Brett Limbaugh from Community Planning. Katie, we want to take a moment tonight to thank you for your service to our community and the effort that you showed in the recent breast cancer Mayor's Challenge. And want to thank you and Amanda for representing our city and peer in the recent challenge and also the event that was held on October 20. I want to thank you for doing that. And your leadership means a lot to us and you have made a tremendous impact on a lot of people. And I want to tell you that my parents were here from Iowa that weekend because that on October 20 just happened to be the fifth anniversary of my sister Bonnie's death from cancer. And you made a big impact on my parents as well, and they really enjoyed visiting with you. So thank you for all you have done. I want to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Rapid City is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Rapid City is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Rapid City chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within the community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Rapid City acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create 300 extra mile cities in America, and our community is proud to support Extra Mile Day. And whereas Rapid City has chosen to honor Katie Parker from our planning department for her dedication, volunteerism, and commitment to making strides against breast cancer Mayor's Challenge. As our team leader, she led our community as our spokeswoman, and she's gone above and beyond to go the extra mile to raise contributions and awareness of early prevention and detection in the fight against breast cancer. Now therefore, I, Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim today to be Katie Parker Day. Thank you.
I had the privilege of working with Katie on this event, and it lasted all month. But I have to tell you, this girl is like the ever-ready bunny dressed in pink. She would just keep going and keep going. And her whole goal was to be number one out of the 11 cities, 11 cities that entered and accepted the Mayor's Challenge. And Katie wanted to make sure that Rapid City was number one. The little secret piece of paper she just showed me shows unofficially, we are number one. So if it comes in officially, it's all Katie. Katie did it. Katie.
I'll just tell you what the final amount was. I received a check for $340 today at 4:32 PM from Murphy's Pub and Grill. And without that, we would not have unofficially won, I should find out in a couple of days. But the grand total is $3,922.38. So thank you, City Council, for your support.
The next item on the agenda is executive session. Joel Landine, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of the executive session is to consult with legal counsel about pending or proposed litigation pursuant to STCL 1-253 subsection, or excuse me, 2- subsection 3.
We have a motion. Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Crank it up. Let's get this thing moving.
We're missing. We'll reconvene. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session? Motion by Lewis and then a second by Clayton. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, crank it up. Let's get this thing moving. We're missing. We'll reconvene. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session? Motion by Lewis and then a second by Clayton. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 2A. Amanda, would you read this into the record for us?
Direction to staff on alleged copyright infringement claim made by Linda Ellis, and I make a motion to deny.
We have a motion and a second by John Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're now in general public comment. I do not have any speaker request forms. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item number three, Mayor's Items. This is the Rapid City Library Board's semi-annual update. And we'll recognize Greta Chapman, our library director, and Jim Olson and Rod Pettigrew from the board.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Greta Chapman, Rapid City Public Libraries. I appreciate you taking time. We understand we have 10 minutes or less. We will not overstep that timeframe. You have three reports attached to your council agenda this evening. And I just bring attention to the fact that the energy report, we started when that study came out in 2010. And it just happened to coincide with your discussion as well, although that was not planned. And Rod will speak to that. And I just want to express the project, the East Branch, that we have opened up for students and staff. And Jim will talk about what's happening there. But it really has turned out to be an excellent project. We're excited for that to move forward and for you to see that as well. So I'll turn this over to Rod for the energy report.
Good evening. I'm Rod Pettigrew, Vice Chair of the Rapid City Public Library Board of Trustees. I believe, it's my understanding, you all received this Conservation and Energy Efficiency paperwork. It's about three pages long. And that pretty much itemizes all of the programs and efficiencies the library staff has started. I met with Kim and Carlos down at the library and tried to get a little more familiar with what they're trying to tell us here. And they tell me this program started in 2005 roughly. And the fiscal impact there, $32,292 in energy savings, that's since 2005. That's not per year by any means. But they've done a great job in implementing a lot of new energy-saving programs. Every year, as the budget allows and routine maintenance is done, they look at implementing new ideas. And when something breaks, instead of just replacing it with standard equipment, they look at the cost and the efficiencies of maybe upgrading that into more efficient parts and pieces. In reference to the HVA systems, the library took advantage of a pilot program through the vendor. And through this pilot program, by participating in that, that saved the library around $20,000 alone, just in that program. When the new control system is complete, and when I say when it is complete, every year they're on a schedule and as things need repair, then those programs or those parts of the program are added. We're estimating that there could be an additional 30% savings in utility costs at the library. And when the balance of the future efficiencies are complete, we look at saving an additional 15 to 20%. And those would be the future efficiencies on page three that you see there. It's my opinion that the library staff is doing an excellent job. I think they are very good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And by providing these efficiencies, not only are we saving money, but I think we're a great example to the community of turning a building into a green building. I don't know if you have any questions for me. If you do, I'll try and answer them.
We'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
I just wanted to, again, commend the library. And I know when we had the discussion with Public Works, I had brought up that the library has made progress on their list as far as projects for greater efficiency. And I think it's, again, the library kind of trailblazing as setting an example for the city and just really being great stewards with taxpayer dollars. So thank you again, as always.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Olson. I'm the Chairman of the Rapid City Public Library Board of Trustees. And I'm just going to take a couple of minutes to highlight some things that are in the reports that you have there in front of you. We have, based on performance-based budgeting, we're just focusing a little bit on what's happening based on the outcomes. I think it's really, you know, you look at where we spend our money and you see the results that we're having in the collections. We've got increase in borrowers, 6,539 since 2011. 99% increase in digital circulation. That's an area that's just exploding and we're getting more and more demand for it all the time. And the interesting thing to us is, as we look around at other libraries around the country, Rapid City Public Library patrons use materials two times more than the national average. And I think that says something about the accessibility of our library and the kinds of things that we have available for our library patrons. And so we're really, we're really proud of that, that we're doing something that is useful to our users. In terms of the facilities, we're on schedule on our capital improvement cycles. And the most exciting part about that is that each East Branch is going to be having a formal opening very soon. We think that's probably coming towards the end of the month. We're trying to get that coordinated with the school district and the county, but we're very close to that. It is operating to a limited extent now. And if you wanted to go out there and walk through it, you're welcome to. You can go into the new section where the library is. And it is a wonderful, wonderful facility. We had a tour a couple of weeks ago with Mark Wilson and all of his staff. And they're excited to have it coming in. We're excited to have it be there. The school district is excited about the fact that it will serve not only the VOTEC, but the students in that area of the community. And it's just, it's going to be a really, an outstanding library facility and a showcase of how community agencies can come together to share one. And so we're really excited about that. Watch for materials on that. We'll be coordinating that. We'll be coordinating that with the mayor's office so that that information can get out to all of the city as well. But it's been, it's been a struggle here to get through all of it, but it's going to have great rewards because we're seeing the, seeing how it's all coming together and seeing the excitement of everybody that's involved. I think it's going to be a great asset to everybody in the community and particularly in that neighborhood. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to take them. We brought our expert along here, too.
Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Chairman Olson, I applaud your work on the East facility, East Library that's coming up. I did have an opportunity to take a walkthrough on that. The staff that was out there took me on a guided tour, and I appreciate their time. So tell them thank you for that. And then I know the Western Dakota Tech students are really anxious about getting in there. And then I've also met some citizens from that area that are interested in waiting for that facility open up. So there's a lot of people looking forward to the use of that facility. So congratulations on getting to this far. So continued success.
Thank you. And we certainly want to get that information out to all of those people in that neighborhood when we're, so we will be having some kind of a weekend event so that people in the neighborhood can be part of that. Because that's really what this is all about, to get the library out into the community even more than it is. So thanks for your comments.
Any further discussion or a motion to acknowledge?
No move.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Peterson to acknowledge the report. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on to non-public hearing items. Can we motion open public comment on items four through 67?
No move.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have one speaker request form so far, and that's from Ben Snow on item 65.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm just here to affirm our support for item number 65. Should I be polled for consent? Reserve my spot in line for further comment.
We do not have any further speaker request forms. Did I miss anyone? In terms of the facilities, we're on schedule on our capital improvement cycles, and the most exciting part about that is that each East Branch is going to be having a formal opening very soon. We think that's probably coming towards the end of the month. We're trying to get that coordinated with the school district and the county, but we're very close to that. It is operating to a limited extent now, and if you wanted to go out there and walk through it, you're welcome to. You can go into the new section where the library is, and it is a wonderful, wonderful facility. We had a tour a couple of weeks ago with Mark Wilson and all of his staff, and they're excited to have it coming in. We're excited to have it be there. The school district is excited about the fact that it will serve not only the VOTEC, but the students in that area of the community, and it's just, it's going to be a really, an outstanding library facility and a showcase of how community agencies can come together to share one. And so, we're really excited about that. Watch for materials on that. We'll be coordinating that. We'll be coordinating that with the mayor's office so that that information can get out to all of the city as well. But it's been a struggle here to get through all of it, but it's going to have great rewards because we're seeing how it's all coming together and seeing the excitement of everybody that's involved. I think it's going to be a great asset to everybody in the community and particularly in that neighborhood. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to take them. We brought our expert along here, too.
Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Chairman Olson, I applaud your work on the East facility, East Library that's coming up. I did have an opportunity to take a walkthrough on that. The staff that was out there took me on a guided tour, and I appreciate their time, so tell them thank you for that. And then I know the Western Dakota Tech students are really anxious about getting in there. And then I've also met some citizens from that area that are interested in waiting for that facility open up, so there's a lot of people looking forward to the use of that facility. So, congratulations on getting to this far, so continued success.
Thank you, and we certainly want to get that information out to all of those people in that neighborhood when we're... So, we will be having some kind of a weekend event so that people in the neighborhood can be part of that, because that's really what this is all about, to get the library out into the community even more than it is. So, thanks for your comments.
Any further discussion or a motion to acknowledge?
No move.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Peterson to acknowledge the report. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on to non-public hearing items. Can we motion open public comment on items four through 67?
No move.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have one speaker request form so far, and that's from Ben Snow on item 65. Item 65.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm just here to affirm our support for item number 65. Should it be pulled from consent, reserve my spot in line for further comment.
We do not have any further speaker request forms? Did I miss anyone? We have motion to close public comment on items four through 67. Motion by Scott, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on items four through 67. Any member of the council or staff like to remove any item for separate consideration? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove item 35, 41, and 43.
35, 41, and 43. Charity?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull items 16, 20, 34, and 65.
So far, we have 16, 20, 34, 35, 41, 43, and 65. John Roberts?
Good.
65.
Item 60.
Item 60. Pauline Sumption.
54, please.
So far, we have 16, 20, 34, 35, 41, 43, 54, 60, and 65. Do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent? Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 16. We'll go to Jerry Wright, our Public Works Chairman.
Item 16 is PW 1030-12-05, the approved change order of number 1F to Muth Electric Incorporated for the Fifth Street and Texas Street Traffic Signal Project, number 12-1996, CIP number 5897 for a decrease of $505, and I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
I'll make a motion to approve, and then I'd like to maintain the floor, please.
Okay, we have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Charity, you have the floor.
I just wanted to publicly thank Public Works for moving this up. I've gotten quite a bit of feedback on this, people getting out to go to school and work in the morning. It's made a big difference, so thanks for your flexibility, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 20. Jerry?
Item number 20 is PW 1030-12-09, authorize staff to advertise for bids for the street light maintenance contract, estimated cost of $50,000, and I yield the floor.
Go to Charity Doyle.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor.
Motion by Doyle, second by Lewis. Go ahead.
Terry, we were having a, well, if may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Conversation this morning about that, and we didn't get the follow-up on, did you see what we were referring to as far as scratching out the funding source?
Yes, I did, and I apologize. That's one of the items I forgot to get back to you on. I think what we were doing is correcting the typo. We didn't inadvertently just put streets in the fund name. It's general fund, but it's out of, it's a separate fund. It's actually street lighting. That's where all the payments for street lighting, tobacco, power, and light come out of, and our maintenance of our city maintains streetlights.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is to approve item 20. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 34. Jerry?
Item 34 is PW 1030-12-24, request authorization to seek proposals for the Robinsdale area utility street reconstruction project, number 122063, Nevada Drive and Maple Avenue, CIP number 54213-2, Wisconsin Avenue, Nathan Court and Sterns Court, CIP number 5421.3-3, and Nevada Drive and Grandview Drive, CIP number 50421.3-4. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Go to Charity Doyle.
Make a motion to approve, please.
Yeah, we have a motion by Doyle and a second by Laurenti.
I just wanted to say that, you know, for those of you in Ward 1 in older Robinsdale, pay attention, there will be a cone zone. We're putting $3.3 million into that area finally to replace the old sewer and water mains and reconstruct the streets, so heads up, you're warned, and this is going to be a good thing for Robinsdale. I yield.
Thank you, Charity. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve item number 34. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 35. Jerry?
Item 35 is PW 1030-12-25, request to purchase seven ADA-approved 30-foot rapid ride transit vehicles, estimated cost $1,737, excuse me, $1,737.36. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second by Laurenti, and you have the floor.
Thank you. I would just like to commend the Rapid Ride Transit, Rich Sagan, and all of his drivers and his team. They have actually increased their participation over 30%, and that is fantastic, and I think we need to take more time to recommend or recognize our city employees. So I just want to give a big hearty thank you and congratulations. Yield the floor.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 41. Amanda?
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign statement of support for the Guard and Reserve, and I make a motion to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Second.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson, and you have the floor.
Thank you. I really like this one because, as a veteran, I just want to make sure that everyone in Rapid City still continues to support the Guard and all of our service people. They do so much for us that any little bit that we can actually do for them, I think, should be commended. So, thank you very much, and I give this my full support.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion on the motion? Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 43. Amanda?
Acknowledge Capital Improvement Program Committee monthly update for October 2012, and I'd like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor, please.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second by Peterson, and you have the floor.
Thank you. On this one, just wanted to give a heads up to our citizens in Ward 4. There was a pedestrian study done on Anamosa Street, where Walmart and the apartment complex is across the street. It does warrant a pedestrian crossing. It will be coming forward in 2013, so just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. I know not only myself, but also Alderman John Roberts and Alderman Ron Sasso received concerns from citizens, and you were heard, so I just wanted the citizens to know that. Please continue to bring us your concerns. We do listen. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item 54. Amanda?
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign the life safety loan agreement between Bach Investment Company and the City of Rapid City. I make a motion to approve with a stipulation or amendment. Pauline?
Give a clarification of the amendment.
Yes, could I please also get authorization to cut a treasurer's check to Bach Investments, Inc., so that we can get this loan started right away, please?
So moved.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second by Wright. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 60. Amanda?
Resolution number 2012-124 to establish the position of a Civic Center Accounting and Administration Manager. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson to approve. Any discussion? And we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions on this, and I don't know who I would ask. I noticed on this, this is just a reclassification. Correct?
We'll recognize Tracy Heitch from the Civic Center.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, it is a reclassification of an existing position.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can I direct this, I don't know who towards, maybe you, Mr. Mayor, is a seven-step increase, or, you know, seven-grade increase common within the city of Rapid City? I know within the county, I think I saw a three-step one time and a couple of twos, but seven steps is a little...
Tracy, can you add some clarification on the number of steps and the reason for the change?
Certainly. This position was originally implemented as a grade 14, and based on the changes that we've had at the Civic Center in recent times, we have taken this to our Board of Directors and had many discussions regarding the position over the last several months. And the reasons for the justification for the increase is our ticket sales have doubled in the last five years, basically going from 3.68 million to 7.26 million, and our number of facility events has increased by about 23%. So, this position is going to help additional support and to provide day-to-day accounting management functions within the facility based on those increases, as well as provide supervision for our facility-wide cash handling and ticketing and POS system integration. So, based on our changes that we've experienced and what we potentially see in the future, we felt that this is an important position to take a close look at and reclassify.
And I don't disagree with that. I think the position probably is warranted. Seven grades is an awful big step. That's just what I'm pointing out. If you'd look on the non-union pay scale, and I have no idea what this person, their grade is, but let's just take, for example, they're at a Step F. If they were at a Step F, that'd be $14,983 a year. So, depending on where they're at, it could be anywhere from $10,000 a year increase to a $25,000 increase on this pay grade. So, I just wanted to let people know, I wanted to point it out, that this is pretty uncommon, I think, to go up seven grades. Maybe not, but I know that, I would think it is. Anyway, thank you.
The position is obviously not currently occupied. It is not currently occupied.
Oh, great. Okay. Then I'm absolutely fine with it.
Yeah.
Because the way I read the memo, it sounded like you were just promoting somebody up seven grades.
And I'm sorry to jump in, but no, the position has actually been empty since January. We've spent a lot of time analyzing the position and the duties of the position. Spent a lot of time talking with our Board of Directors about the position as well, so this is something that they took a very close look at over the last several months and voted to approve and move forward with at their September 25 meeting, so it's not a currently occupied position.
Okay. Then I am absolutely fine with it. The way your memo read, it sounded like you were...
My apologies.
Promoting somebody, and I just had a problem with that. The position itself, I have no problem with whatsoever, and I will vote for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to, not really ask a question, but in case you need clarification, Tracy, being a fully self-supported enterprise fund, I surmise, one of the calculations you weighed into this, or the board weighed into this, was that you do have this within your budget. That position's been open for quite some time, and this job description change more closely matches what your needs are, correct? Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 65. Amanda?
Request the mayor to authorize staff to enter into negotiations with Hanny Shaffey regarding proposed trade of land at the Wally Byam site for the land adjacent to the airport. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Roberts for approval, and we'll first go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
I have absolutely no problem supporting this, but I want to make sure that that floodway is left in our title. Is that going to happen in writing?
Thank you for the question.
That's my number-one concern. I have no problem with the land swap. I just want to make sure that that floodway stays in title to Rapid City, Rapid City.
Joel, can you help us out with that question?
I want an answer really from our attorney, and I want it from our Public Works Corps of Administrators.
Well, both Public Works and community planning in our office have been involved in the discussions. There is a policy in place where the city is committed to retaining the 100-year floodplain. Part of the question on this property is there's a lot of floodplain area that maybe could be narrowed down a little bit with some map revisions and going through the process that FEMA has. There's some channelization of some stuff on the north end of the property. Some of the stuff on the south end is always going to remain in the floodplain. We want to give the developer or the purchase, or the Mr. Shaffey, the opportunity to make some modifications to that. What we've discussed is that they would be able to do a map revision, and that we would transfer, if they were able to get some of that out, we would transfer all the property, but that within a certain period of time, the property would be transferred back to the city. Anything within the 100-year floodplain would be donated back to the city, so we would end up with title to it. There's also future park use potentially in the area, that this would be part of the greenway, and we want to make sure we protect that as well. So, we've had those discussions, that would be part of it. Whatever the final agreement is, it will involve whatever's left of the floodplain coming back to the city. I don't think that a huge amount would be removed, but there would be some potential to remove some of it. Until they actually go through the revisions and get that out, it's difficult for us to know exactly what the boundaries are going to be. So, in discussing it with Brett and with Terry, the belief was that if we could get them to do the map revision, then we would know the exact boundaries of the 100-year floodplain and have it surveyed out, then they could transfer that back to us, and it would maximize the land that was able to be developed on this property.
Okay, I fully understand that. I just want to make sure the public heard that from us, that we are going to hold to the title of that floodway. And I hear this exchange, they're going to give it back to us. I don't even want to put it in their title where they give it back to us. I want, at least, I understand it's got to be defined and determined by FEMA, correct? And when that's done, that sets the final line. But until that is, until it's modified by construction and grading and so forth, I want to protect us from giving up that portion of the title. I have no problem giving the stuff that's definitely out and giving up to that ultimately. That's not the issue. I just want to make darn sure that that 100-year floodway stays in our title, period, from now till eternity. Can we do that?
Yes, I believe we can. I mean, certainly the floodplain is going to be a consideration, but we need some flexibility. Whatever we bring back, I'm sure with the final agreement, we're going to have that discussion. If there's a way for us to retain that without ever transferring it, we will, but there might be a possibility for a proposal that would temporarily transfer it, but we would have a time limit on it when it would have to be transferred back. And frankly, until we sit down and really discuss how it's going to look, or if there's a way for them to do what they need to do without transferring that initially, then we can do that.
I would be more comfortable if we were to retain deed to what is defined as a 100-year flood right now, in writing clarifying that we will deed over to them any territory or property that's reclaimed from the 100-year flood through their modifications. I'd rather see it that way. Not trying to put the tights on you, Hanny, but I want to protect that floodway. I said enough. I'm done for now. Thank you.
We'll now go to John Roberts. John?
Go ahead, Hanny. You're itching. Get up there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Joel is correct, and, you know, there is a, there are two types of floodway on the property. One is the major creek floodway, which I don't think anybody with the right mind will even touch that one. You know, not only from engineering point of view, but also from aesthetics to our community, there are a lot of trees in that floodway along the creek. Those should be preserved as part of the preservation for the future park that will be in that area and as part of the greenway. There is also a major drainage way that is defined also as a floodway by the FEMA maps that really damaged the property and affects its development that goes all the way from Highway 44, and it conveys the drainage from the north side, from all the way from Green Tree and that area, all the way to the creek. That floodway that is relating to that drainage has to be modified to make the property viable, potentially, developable. And the reason I say that that floodway that is relating to that drainage way meanders through the property and is not going in a straight line, making the development really hard. As far as preserving the floodway with the deed currently, it will require a plat because it is meandering around, and to follow the floodplain, you have to plat the property. It will take a lot of effort and a lot of work, and it will require a lot of improvements, even in behalf of the city, to make that plat happen. The goal there is actually to preserve not only the floodway and portion of the floodplain, but also to preserve even, as I mentioned to some of the folks on the parks, friends of the park, is to also create easements in the future as we master plan the property for a bike path that will connect to the future bike path that will go along the railroad bed going towards Kadoka or what have you, and also to provide for additional ground that is outside the floodplain for a park in the future, because currently, we cannot put structures in the... in the future, because currently, we cannot put structures in the floodplain, so hopefully we could master a plan, a park that will be really accessible to all the folks in the eastern part of the city. We really, we could make the agreements in such a way where we will deed back to the city the ground that is not only the floodway, but also ground that we will coordinate with the Parks Department, with the folks in the community, and that portion, that part of the community, to create a viable, usable park for that part of the community. We're not really going to cheat the city. We're not going to have an agreement that is enforceable by both parties, and that really outlines all those things. We hope to get Mr. Alderman Wright on the review of that agreement to make sure that it is protective, just as good as a deed can protect the city. You know, the goal there is actually to transfer it as soon as the plat can be viably done. The use of the plat, any adjustment to the floodplain will not happen now. It will happen as soon as the development happens, and at that time, a plat can be generated to deed back to the city, whatever is needed to use as a park, and also everything that is in the floodway and the floodplain. I hope that helps. By the way, I mean, transferring the deed, you know, without a plat will not really comply with the state law or with the county register of deeds requirements. So, we, as is, the property has a deed, so it can be transferred. But if we try to bisect it in less than 40-acre tracts, then it requires a plat to create such deeds. So, we really, I wish we could wait to do the plats and the identification of the floodplain as soon as we finish with the map revision, as Mr. Landin mentioned. Thank you.
I have one more question for you, Hanny. So, I was contacted last week and didn't get a chance to get ahold of you or the Elks Golf Course. I got contacted by them. I was wondering if you could kind of speak a little bit on what your plans were as far as that, as far as them being able to work with them to keep their property out there so they can keep their first T program going and a couple of the other programs going out there.
We have talked to the folks at the Elks, and they currently have a portion of the driving range that occupies a portion of the property, and we have assured him, and we go under a curfew, that we will honor whatever agreements that the city has with them, and once, there will not be any changes to their existing driving range, and we will comply with all the agreements that the city has with them. In the future, as we deed the property back to the city, most of that driving range exists in the floodplain, and we hope to deed that to the city and work with the folks from the golf course to make sure that their process is not compromised, because it is part of the community. You know, that's a merit for the east side of town folks, and it's done a lot of good thing for that part of the community, so we need to preserve it.
Thank you very much, Hanny. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go to Chad Lewis. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually was going to echo the sentiments of Mr. Roberts before he stole all my questions here. The golf course actually was something I was concerned about, but another question was brought forth to me by a constituent who formerly was with the city and informed me that this property was originally bought as a way to fund the enterprise, the Water Enterprise Fund, and that proceeds from this, any sale from this should go to the enterprise fund. Obviously, we're not going to have any proceeds here, so there's some sort of internal mechanism we can use to compensate the Water Enterprise Fund. We already talking about that? Okay. Just want to make sure that was part of the process. This has nothing to do with you, Mr. Hanny. So, Saffy, I'm still 100% in support of this sale, as long as the Elks questions are being addressed and the floodway questions are being addressed. Just wanted some internal bookkeeping there to be done, so. Thank you very much.
Terry, would you help Chad out with his question, please?
You are correct, at least partially. Part of, and I think Joel outlined it in his memo, that a portion of the property was purchased with Water Enterprise Funds, and then some additional properties out there were purchased as part of the connector route, I believe. And we are having some conversations internally on how all the Water Enterprise Fund would be made whole when all is said and done. Thank you.
Could I answer your question? We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Brett Limboff. I mean, I was, Brett, I was pretty much thought this was pretty kind of straightforward, but would you explain in your memo on the, you've got it described as a subdivision of the existing floodplain will be performed? Could you elaborate on that just a little bit further? It's your last paragraph in your memo.
Okay. Well, let's talk about the federal process for floodplain. Now, if you're going to channelize or essentially make the creek a little deeper, put it in a little bit different spot, you have to go through the federal government to do what's called a conditional letter of map revision. And what that is, is a survey of what you plan to do to move the floodplain or do some filling. And at that point, what we'll have is a much better idea where that property line's going to end up, because it's going to be done on a set elevation. Right now, that floodplain meanders all over the place, so trying to survey that floodplain boundary would be very difficult and be very difficult to plat it off. So, actually, it's better to go through this process, because we're going to create a cleaner line that we can subdivide across. Once that clomar is approved, then the work is done. And then you go back to the feds and you ask them for a letter of map revision, which is an as-built drawing of what you've constructed. And at that point, we have not only the official map change, but we also have all the construction activity has been completed. It's generally the best time to do the transfer, because the work's done, we know where the new line is, and then we can make that clean plat along that elevation, which is the new floodplain boundary. Does that help?
It does.
Okay.
One more question, Mayor. May I? Brett, does this, is this the area that would address what Alderman Wright is concerned about?
You know, I think what we're doing tonight is, you know, just trying to get the opportunity to go forward and do some negotiations with Mr. Saffy. I think this comes down to phasing. I mean, there are a number of different things apart from the federal process that we can take a look at as far as when the property is platted and how the property transfer occurs. I mean, if we need to, for example, provide him a construction easement across the floodplain property that we own while still retaining ownership of it, I mean, there's a number of different things we can look at and we're willing to explore with Mr. Saffy. Ultimately, it's coming back to you, whatever this agreement is, and then you can give us the thumbs up or thumbs down on it.
Thumbs up. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
We'll go back to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Again, I want to state I support this land support, land swap. Forty years ago, I did a floodway study for the tributaries of Rapid Creek coming into Rapid Creek in the area, in the Three Mile area. There's no fancy survey, but it was done using rainfall data and calculations through, as weird as Soil Conservation Service and so forth, but at least was able to calculate roughly where those floodways were going to be. A few years later, firms were hired and done in a more formal manner, and they were relatively close. All I'm asking, and I think it's fair, and it's only way else support given this, is we come out legally with a document that shows the land is swapped, but the property that's in that floodway, as defined today, stays entitled to the city. And if you're talking about the floodway coming down on a Valley Drive, same way, that has to be that way. Through the design and modification, if that is decreased, then that property is titled back over to you. Does that make sense? That's all I ask. I think we, I know we can do it. It's not that complicated engineering-wise. And I think it's better than a handshake and a kiss. I think it's a better business arrangement, and we all know where we're going. And I support the project. I just want to see a little firmer thing on it, because I'm concerned that, as we know, council members come and go, projects take time, things are forgotten or missed, and I don't want that to happen, especially with the floodway. So, I would ask for a motion, if I have to make it, I will, that we authorize this, but I want the floodway delineated in a draft mode, amendable to a final mode upon the engineering finally done.
We do have a motion already on the floor.
That is to approve it?
Charlene, can you confirm?
I'll make a substitute motion.
We can come back to you in a moment.
I'm sorry.
You already spoke. We can come back to you in a moment.
Okay.
We'll go to Ron Sasso.
I appreciate what Jerry is trying to emphasize. I know that, you know, we want to make sure that that floodway is protected. I think the concern that I would have in just looking at it from the legal standpoint of, you know, Mr. Saffy trying to make changes to the property that he would not have even temporary possession of, which I think could present some problems for him to be able to do that. And that's why I think if it is on a temporary basis with timelines that are very strict, and I think it would be appropriate for us to get updates on that as that is happening so that, to address that concern, so that it does not fall through the cracks where too much time elapses, I believe that might be the better route for us to take. Thank you.
Let's go to Amanda Scott.
Call the question.
Question's been called. Are there any objections to calling the question? Are there any objections? Charlene, can you restate the motion?
The motion is to approve the request with the mayor to authorize staff to enter into negotiations with Hanny Saffy regarding the proposed trade of land at the Wally Byam site for land adjacent to the airport.
And it will be coming back? Any objections to calling the question? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one no from Jerry Wright. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to non-consent items, item 68 through 89. We have a motion to open public comment. Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment is open. We do not have any speaker request forms on items 68 through 89. Did I miss anyone? We have a motion to close public comment. We have a motion by Scott, second by Doyle to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item 68. Amanda?
Second reading, ordinance number 5872, an ordinance prohibiting public urination and public defecation in the city of Rapid City by amending section 9.08.070 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Amanda, second by Larente. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 69.
Second reading, ordinance number 5869, an ordinance to amend section 17.20.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, allowing dental clinics and medical clinics as permitted uses in the neighborhood commercial district. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Doyle to approve, second reading, item 69. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 70.
First reading, ordinance number 5874, an ordinance to require the finance officer to report estimated federal funding to the common council by amending section 2.40.080 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Amanda Scott, second by John Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 71.
First reading, ordinance number 5875, an ordinance to clarify the boundaries of Business Improvement District Number One, this is the hotel one, by amending section 3.24.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott, second by Doyle to approve, item 71. Note, again, this is the hotel business improvement district. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 72.
First reading, ordinance number 5876, an ordinance to codify the Business Improvement District Number One Board's composition, regulations, and powers by amending sections 3.24.035 and 3.24.036 to chapter 3.24 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number 5877, an ordinance to clarify the occupation tax levied on hotel rooms in Business Improvement District Number One by amending section 3.24.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 74, we'll go to Richie, our vice chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't aware that Jerry left the room. Let's see. Number 74 is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers Incorporated for U Lazy Two LLC for preliminary subdivision plan located at 8970 Nemo Road with stipulations. I move.
We have a motion to approve with stipulations, and a second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 75. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. A request by Fisk and Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers Incorporated for Ferdinand Dirt LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for the property described at the southeast corner of the intersection of East Stuma Road and Fifth Street, and I approve with stipulations.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 76 is a request by Dream Design International Incorporated for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as located at the current southern terminus of Fieldstone Drive, and I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Peterson to approve with stipulations, item 76. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 77. Richie?
Oh, sure. Mayor, this is recommended formation of an energy committee to review energy issues and recommend solutions, and I will yield the floor.
Four has been yielded, and we have several speaker lights here. We'll go first to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. Had our discussion at the Public Works Committee, the consensus was to form a committee or take an effort to formalize what we're going to do with energy. I've not had a chance because of current recent illness to discuss with the committee, but I would really like to, not to form another committee, but the Public Works Committee meet to serve as an ear for what we could formally do to implement energy conservation throughout the city. We have data that's collected. We have several departments that have done remarkable work in energy conservation. You heard about the library, but I know Water, wastewater, solid waste have also done comparable things. But I'm willing to suspect that usually what happens is the departments are limited by funds or the ability to actually implement. So, I would suggest that we, as a Public Works Committee, meet and discuss this issue, and I think what we, what I would like to see is clarification and a policy of support from the council to our departments and to the mayor, that we support and encourage energy conservation as a frontline measure in preparation of a budget, and that submittals of budgets shall include any energy conservation projects without question. And they can be voted up or down in the budget process. But I think that's been, my experience is the number-one stumbling block is funding. That's what keeps things from happening, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, I'm going to make a motion to deny this, and I'd like to retain the floor.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Doyle to deny, and you have the floor.
Thank you. There was a report done in 2010, and there were some suggestions made in table 5-1. The suggestions were for energy conservation items that can be referenced to whether it's an enterprise fund or a CIP fund or the general fund. So, I agree with Alderman Wright, that I believe it is up to the department heads. I really don't want to see this go back to a committee and in a delaying activity at this time. I think it needs to move forward. think it needs to move forward. So in the budgetary process, I don't want to see this go to committee. I think it is the responsibility of the department heads and the mayor, and I know the mayor supports this, to go ahead and see what number of these already identified conservation measures can be implemented. And if we have to start small, we start small, but at least we're starting. I'll yield the floor.
We'll go to Richie.
Mayor, do I take it we have a motion on the floor?
We do.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to send this to the CIP committee for review. And if I may, retain the floor.
Do we have a second to Richie's motion? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The consultants that put this together, Stanley Consultants, did this project in 2010, and we've been sitting on these projects for a couple of years now. And there is absolutely nothing wrong with getting these sent up to CIP, where the committee already has a line item called government buildings. A lot of these would, if not all of these projects, would fit into that committee. Yes, there is some, the downfall part of it is that the amount of funding, but as Jerry suggested, there could be some suggestions or comments made from Public Works to forward it up to the CIP committee. Whereas right now, the, all the projects that are identified would, there's something like twenty-some projects that are identified, and if we can put these into the CIP under government buildings, we can start addressing them there. And if anybody's got any questions on this, I'd be happy to elaborate.
Thank you, Richie. And before we go to any additional lights, I could like, I'd like to offer a few comments that might clarify this discussion. I think that either this motion or the previous motion would be, would be fine, because, I mean, this really, at least a portion of it, needs to come back to capital improvements anyway. But there are really three pieces to this. We, some of this can be funded through capital improvements or CIP. Other, other can be, some of it can be funded through the enterprise funds, which have already started addressing some of this. And then, then there are also some things I believe that can be done in the general fund through the general fund budgeting process. We have a department head meeting this week, and Terry Waltersdorf and I have already spent considerable time talking about this, this issue. And since a lot of, a lot of the initiatives will fall under the purview of the Public Works Department, he is going to be taking the, the lead on this, as he has experienced in doing this for other cities in his past lives as well. So this is something that we are pursuing already, and, and this is a priority of yours. It's also a priority of mine, and we are going to, to move forward. So I'm okay with either motion. It will be coming back. I mean, if, if we went back to the previous motion and tabled this, tabled this item, we would still be bringing it back to, to capital improvements at, at some point. But we have some work to do within the department heads group to, to identify the low-hanging fruit and figure out where, where that's going to be funded from and what the priority is.
Richie, you have any?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the suggestions and the offers to bring these up into three different areas of departments or divisions, enterprise fund, general fund, and also capital improvements. And just, could you elaborate on the rationale for tabling this instead?
I was referring to the previous motion, which was to deny the...
Oh, okay. A little heart tremor here.
Tabling was the wrong word. What I meant to say is if Amanda's motion to deny had passed, it would still be coming back.
Certainly. Yeah, we, just to kind of elaborate a little bit, is that whichever direction this goes, is that we need to move forward on this in a positive direction. The folks that have given me this information, I, by the way, Terry, Mr. Waltersdorf, I noticed that one of them might be out of order on our, on our occupy sensors, restrooms, locker rooms. It, it could be out of order because, not in the creek, the sequence, the proper sequence, because the, the payback doesn't quite add up, or the math doesn't quite work out on that one. But it's still, when it comes to the bottom line here, if we could actually do all of these projects, we would be seeing the payback within four years, four and a half years. And that's why I'm interested in seeing this move forward in some positive direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richie. And we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Well, I'll simplify it by making the motion of motions, and that is this, that tonight, the council acts adopting a policy that the mayor, through his department heads, when they develop their budgets, will provide and submit energy conservation projects.
Okay, we have a second substitute motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion, a second substitute motion by Wright and a second by Roberts.
And Larente, by the way.
And Larente, second. He thirded it.
Both seconded it.
All right. So just so everyone knows, there's no, there's not any room for any more motions. So unless the motion's withdrawn, we have to vote on, vote on this one. So, okay, any, any further discussion?
Well, I, I think that ends the committeeizing it. I think it gets us where it belongs in the department heads. But I think it's also giving them the blessing that we, as a council, support action to conserve energy. So we don't need to commit outside of it anymore. Just get her done. So call the question. That's simple.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso.
I think it's interesting, just because we've got, we've had three motions already, and, and I know we have no room for more, but basically, this is one of those things where, as we look at this, and it's, I think everybody finds it very important, and the challenge is, how is the best way for us to get it done? But I think just the diversity and the fact that we all want to see it get done is what's important. So whatever we end up deciding to vote, vote on, I think either way, it's still going to end up at CIP. It's, department heads have to start with it. They're probably going to request CIP funds. So I think whatever we do, we're, we're in the right, we're heading in the right direction as, as a council and as a city. So, thank you.
May we clarify an issue?
Let me ask you a question, jury, to clarify. If I can clarify your, if I understand your motion, your motion is, is simply to enthusiastically endorse what's already been done and ask that we proceed with implementing it as soon as we can. Is that, is that a fair summary of your motion? Because the way I interpret that is, is we're going to start this week by discussing it with the department heads. At some point, very soon, there's going to be item or multiple items on capital improvements. It'll also be discussed in the, the budget process and, and in the enterprise funds. So did I understand your motion?
In essence, that's it. And, and I think to clarify the issue, the CIP money doesn't, the CIP committee does not review investments made by the enterprise fund. And that's the Civic Center, the Water Department, wastewater, solid waste, and airport. So I think we, as a city, the policy that you're going towards is working with the department heads, saying, energy conservation, energy conservation projects are a priority. Bring them in during your budget process, and they will be heard. May not be funded, may not be approved, but they will be heard. Yes. If that's...
So I think we're on the same page.
If you and I are reading the same thing, that's what I want.
Mayor, if I might?
You may.
Thank you. I've already committed to putting this on the agenda for CIP. So whether you vote on the motion to take it to CIP or not, it's going to CIP. So, just for clarification.
But, okay, okay. But let me, let me point this out, though. But you do not review the capital expenditures of enterprise funds, do you?
Correct. The enterprise funds are totally separate. They can be funded through CIP, but generally, typically, usually, they are not.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows where I'm at on this, and there's three more lights to speak, I support Jerry's motion, and the previous two motions would really get us there. All three of these motions, in a way, are a distinction without a difference, but Jerry's is the most emphatic, enthusiastic of the three motions, and I think we should proceed, proceed with that. And so if that helps clear out some lights, I guess not.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I think what Mr. Wright is trying to get is that this should become like a city policy for future mayors, for future councils, that, that energy conservation wish list should always be maintained and brought forward, because this is my third year to have an annual energy report, and this is, so far, this is as far as those energy reports have gotten, as, you know, as far as the council's attention. And so I think Mr. Wright's looking for something more overriding than just this immediate issue, but so that we go on record as a council that we want the department heads and all the enterprise funds to bring forward projects, and whether they're funded or not, that they need, you know, they're required and required to do it, so that we keep this on the forefront of other councils and other mayors. So, anyway, I'll be supporting Jerry's. Thank you.
And we'll go to Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Since Pauline has suggested this is going up to CIP anyway, I, I will gladly withdraw my motion. But I just want to clarify something, if I may, from Jerry on his motion, is that right now, we're having a challenge to meet the budgeting or the funding sources for those departments, including the enterprise funds. So we want to make sure that when it does go, as your suggestion, come in for, for the Public Works Committee, that we have somebody, that these projects actually get into the budget. That's my main concern. Right now, right now, they're not. So if the 2014 budget is starting to get reviewed right now, let's, let's get it going.
Well, to clarify.
Yes. Is that my, you understand my question?
Okay. We're going to go to Chad Lewis.
Call the question.
The question has been called. Any objections to calling the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. Item number seventy-eight. Bids?
First time for bid is the Meadowbrook Maintenance Phase Three. This is actually the second time we bid this project. We received three bids on it, but the recommendation is to refer it back to the Public Works Meeting on November thirteen.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine is for the Memorial Park Irrigation Improvements. We received two bids on this. Again, the recommendation is to refer it back to the November thirteen Public Works Committee meeting.
Motion by Doyle, second by Larente. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Number eighty is for the permanent pavement marking project. We received two bids on this. Recommendation is to award base bid plus alternate one in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and six dollars to Dakota Barricade, Inc.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Eighty-one.
Eighty-one is for the Rapid City Fire Department Storage and Training Facility Roof Renovation. This is the old DSG building that we recently purchased. We received two bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total base bid less alternate three and the total amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to Black Hills Roofing Company.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Final bid is for the 2011 storm drain, storm damage recovery project, Schedule C. We received two bids on this item as well. Recommendation is to award to Pendos Construction, Inc., in the amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson. Terry, that is a huge spread from, from bid A to bid B. Can, can you shed some light on that?
To be honest with you, I don't know that I can. We, we saw quite a range of prices on, on a lot of our roof bids, if I remember right. I think RCS got our, our roofs out at the landfill material recovery facility. So I don't know that I can really shed much light on that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Items eighty-three through eighty-seven, unless there are objection, we will take all at once. Can we have a motion to approve? Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts. Any objections to considering these all at once? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-seven A was dealt with earlier. We are now on item... eighty-seven A? Yeah. Item, item eighty-eight. Jerry, can you read this into the record?
That was withdrawn, correct?
Yeah.
Item number CC eleven zero five twelve dash zero four point one is a request by Kurt Pocart of Thirteen Fourteen Seventh Street, Rapid City, South Dakota, five seven seven zero one, to appeal the approval of an application for a variance to the Sign Code Board of Appeals to allow one hundred and twelve square foot digital sign in lieu of a sixty square foot as per chapter fifteen twenty-nine oh five oh of the Rapid City Municipal Code for the sign located at nine twenty-one Camel Street, legally described as the north one thousand and eighty feet of east thirty acres of southeast quarter, northeast quarter, section six, township one north, range eight east, Black Hills Meridian, Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota. And this item has been withdrawn. I make a motion to accept it.
Do we have a second?
Did I do that right?
You could read the information in bold, and we're good to go.
I just, I wanted to be right.
Motion is to acknowledge the withdrawal of the, of the variance. Richie?
Mayor, just a question for Mr. Kurt Pocart. Is, is he going to be reimbursed, or how does that work, since this is being tabled, and he spent some money on sending out notices? Does he get reimbursed on this?
I don't think so. But he made a difference in the process by filing the appeal. I, that's a good question. I wouldn't...
Keep, keep in mind that the money he paid was to send out notices, and the notices were sent out. So there was an expenditure that needs to be reimbursed. So no, he would not be, he would not be reimbursed for that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-nine.
In totality, number CC eleven zero five twelve dash zero four point two, a request by Scotty Pierce, architect for Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, to convert an on-premise sign to an on-premise sign, signed per section of fifteen twenty-nine zero seven oh of the Rapid City Municipal Code for the sign located at twelve hundred North Lacrosse Street, legally described as lot A of lot twenty-five R and lot B of five R Meridian Subdivision, section thirty, township two north, range eight east, Black Hills Meridian Rapid City. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Wright and a second by Larente.
I think these two did it again.
Any discussion on the motion, as to approve the conversion of on to off premise? We'll go to Bill Clayton. Bill?
I just have one. And this will make Larente laugh, I know. But somebody needs to discuss the difference between premise and premises, because premises is not the plural of premise. A premise is an idea, and a premises is a property. So both of those should be off premises and on premises. My...
Duly noted.
Discussion for the day.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on public hearing items, items ninety through ninety-seven. Do we have a motion to open public hearing? We have a motion by Scott, second by Doyle to open public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms. We have a motion to close public hearing. We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on consent items ninety through ninety-six. Would anyone like any of these items polled? We'll first go to Pauline Assumption, our finance officer. Pauline?
Thank you, Mayor. I need item number ninety-six polled, please.
Item ninety-six has been polled. Any other items? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent? We have a motion by Doyle, second by Larente. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item ninety-six. Jerry, can you read this into the record for us?
Item number six, LF ten thirty-one twelve dash twenty-four is resolution number twelve twenty-twelve dash one oh seven B, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Pauline. We'll go to Pauline.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to remove number nine on this list, as they have paid their assessment.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson to approve as amended, which means removing item number nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number ninety-seven. Amanda? A note, this is now first reading in item, in ordinance fifty-eight sixty-eight.
First reading, ordinance number fifty-eight sixty-eight, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by James and Kelly Comet for a rezoning from general commercial district to medium-density residential district for the property generally described as located at eight oh nine Saint Andrew Street. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.